I will call the meeting to order. He was less ready than he thought.
Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide... Give me one second. Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide information during the meeting to the council. These are informational presentations only, and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda, and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone; otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching, and thank you for engaging with the city of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
I need Seth on the screen to be able to...
I'll put Seth back on the screen. It's our first time attempting to have a council member attend via Zoom, so we're...
There he is.
Might have a few technical glitches, but we'll get there. There's Seth.
Seth Balog?
Can you hear us, Seth? Seth? Seth can't hear us.
Way bad, him.
I don't know what he can see. Can you hear me now, Seth? Seth still can't hear us. Wave if you can hear me, Seth. Give you one more try here, Jen, then pipe just go on. Why don't you go on with the roll call, and then Seth will raise his... or Drew will raise his hand if he gets Seth going, and we'll come back to it.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, now we can hear you. Can you hear us?
No, I can't hear you.
You can't hear me.
I got you now. I got you. There you go. Thank you, program.
Seth Balog?
Here.
Sean Lucas?
Here.
Jared Giddens?
Here.
Aaron Peterson?
Here.
Darlene Graham?
Here.
Matt Ogden?
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seth, would you like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve.
It's all made. Second.
Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Jared Giddens?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Matt Ogden?
Yes.
Seth Balog?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to our visitor's section.
There are a lot of you tonight. Some of you are wanting to speak on...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
...items that are on the agenda. If it's a council bill that you're wanting to speak on, you can't speak on it during the visitor's section, but during the public hearing on that item. Do you want me to pause?
Nope. I think you're good.
Okay. Marlene Middleton, you are wanting to speak on the rezonant tracker in Maine. You can speak during the public hearing on that item when that comes up.
Let's just do it after the visitor's section.
And then Chris Wyatt, same thing, the tracker rezoning. You can speak on that during the public hearing on that item. Neil, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Were you wanting... what item were you wanting to speak on? The tracker? Okay. During the public hearing, you can speak on that. Timmy, you're wanting to speak on the remanded or the amended. You can speak on the public hearing on that one. Karen Bliss, are you wanting to speak on an item that's on the agenda or something separate? Something separate? Okay, go ahead.
I'm Karen Bliss, and I live here in Nixa. One of the things I... or the main thing I wanted to come talk about is, I know it's been kind of an issue with the ballot initiatives that were voted down, and we don't have a big budget here. I understand that. But last week, I believe Mayor Steele had proposed moving some funds from the general fund over to the transportation budget, correct, in 116? And it basically got killed and is gone. So I kind of wanted to address that. I know right now there's a lot of things happening, and you guys are going to have to make some pretty tough decisions. And I believe the meeting before you guys had mentioned that basically sidewalks are going to be kind of an impossible thing to make happen. Basically, I do know that it was mentioned that sidewalks are maybe a nice-to-have. I think in a lot of cases that's true, but not in all cases. I've only lived in Nixa about two and a half years, and when I moved here, one of the first things I noticed, no sidewalks on my street, but I can understand. That's just my neighborhood, not super fast-paced. But the thing that caught me off-guard was when I went over taking my kids walking to Rotary Park, is that there are no sidewalks surrounding Rotary Park. So I think there are areas that it's not just a nice-to-have, that it's actually related to public safety. And I don't know the history on putting sidewalks in there. I know it's probably been something that people have talked about many times. It's probably not just me bringing it up, and no one's ever talked about it before. But I do think that either, you know, upping that transportation budget, whether with a tax or by moving things from the general fund, I think that's important to a lot of people. I know Mayor Steele mentioned he'd heard that, and I've heard a lot of that myself. I do know we talk, you know, like I said, you guys talk a lot about public safety. And one of the questions I think came up, I think it might have been Councilmember Giddens, that said, "Well, why right now?" Right? You asked, "Why now?", I believe. And I think if we... I understand the question, like, because it's been going on a long time that we haven't had sidewalks in some of these areas. But I think at the same time, we could keep asking, "Why now?", for a long time, and some of these areas could continue not to have sidewalks. Now, I obviously understand that we have... the police have need for budgetary changes. The parks have need for budgetary changes. But I think if we see some of the things that citizens are really asking for, at least in some areas where it is more of a need versus a want, I think some of those things will become a reality on the ballots. People will be more prone to voting for those sorts of things. Because I know Rotary Park, and specifically, I'm sure some of you guys have seen it on nights where there's baseball games, soccer games, and maybe tennis going on at the same time. There's not much parking, so what do people do? They walk if they live close, and if they don't, they park across the street and walk over there anyway. You know, some of the schools, there's some sidewalks, but I'll still see kids, and you can't make kids walk anywhere necessarily, but there'll be kids walking on the opposite side of the street, particularly by the junior high, where there aren't sidewalks, even though there's sidewalks on one side. They aren't... they're kids, right? They're going to walk where they want to walk. But I think some of these things... anyway, moving on sidewalks, I think that it would be important to look at some of those high-priority areas and find a way to make those things happen, whether that's by moving from the general fund or by, you know, proposing a transportation tax. And I know there's lots of street improvements as well that are maybe even more pressing regarding public safety above those sidewalks. So, anyway, I think that's all I had, so.
Thank you very much. I believe that the, like, price cut at Rotary Park, probably Doug might know, but we had proposed that as part of, like, the capital improvement. We had the capital improvement tax several years ago. That was one of the things we were going to add. I think we had a couple million dollars worth of additional sidewalks that would have connected all the schools, which is kind of what I had always tried to do, is connect all the schools and all the parks together, so that you would have kind of that infrastructure underneath. And we've added some of that stuff, so we've gotten the sidewalk that runs on 14, so you could go pretty much all the way from the high school now, all the way over to Wicklow. So you have... we have some connectivity now. But yeah, I definitely would like to see additional connectivity around Rotary Park. That'd be great.
Connie Wyatt?
I want to speak during the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Ron Sanders?
Good evening. Name's Ron Sanders. I live here in Nixa. I made notes this time. We'll see if this works. Wanted to talk tonight about being imperfect. All of us are. None of us are perfect. We have to deal with that. And one of the things that we have to do is we have to find the courage to try to do things good and to do things better. If that means that you throw good ideas out there, or even sometimes crazy ideas out there, get beat up, you know? Whenever you put yourself out there, people are going to knock you down. People are going to take your ideas and tear them apart, and hopefully come up with a better idea if they do. It really wouldn't be very productive if people just tore ideas apart and then never actually offered any alternatives and stuff like that. But you have to have the courage to try, and you have to have the courage to step up and speak and put things out there. And we always have to have a good environment where we can do that. One of the things that a lot of people may not step up and do is take some pride in your accomplishments. There have been some pretty awesome accomplishments in the past year, and I hope that everybody has some time to reflect and say, "Hey, you know, this turned out really, really great. You know, I should have a little bit of pride in what I've done. I should have a little bit of pride in, you know, what I've accomplished." Comes after the fact, of course. You know, you have to be careful with that. I see every once in a while, people will see the person with the shiny car or the shiny object, and they'll get a little envious. And, you know, we might see other cities that have a little bit better things than us or different things than us, and we might be envious. And be careful about envy, because it can lead you down the wrong path and make you make dumb decisions that you might regret later. But, you know, still have the courage to try and make sure that you talk about it and suss things out and everything, you know? But be careful not to show envy, and be careful not to be envious of what other people have, because, you know, it may not be for you. Be humble. Be careful about that pride and everything else, and be humble about who you are and what you know, and don't be afraid to speak up and talk to other people about things. Show grace. It's one of the hardest things, is when you see people going through tough times, is take the time to show a little bit of grace to people whenever they make mistakes, whenever they fall on their face. Have a little grace whenever you see somebody throw a bad idea out there and you have to rip it apart. At least be nice about it, you know? Or help them turn it into a better idea. Forgive. We have a lot of very tough times, and we've gone through a lot of things, and we should find it in our hearts to forgive whenever we've been trespassed, and that's something that this season should bring to us. Don't let trying to be perfect stop you from being good. A lot of people really try to be perfect. They gear their lives, they construct their lives to be perfect here, to be perfect there, and sometimes they forget that, you know, you have to be good, and sometimes being perfect gets in the way. Be thankful every day, not just during these holiday seasons, but be thankful every day that you're here and you're a part of one of the greatest cities, one of the best cities, where I could honestly say that almost everybody here are good people, very good people. And make sure that you celebrate the holidays, and make sure that you look people in the eye and say, "Merry Christmas", or "Happy Hanukkah", or whatever you're feeling. And I hope that everybody is blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. All right. We'll move on from the visitor's section. I think I skipped. Mr. Peterson's going to make a motion.
Yes. I move to postpone the consideration of Council Bill Number 2022-121 until the January 9, 2023, regular city council meeting, or as soon thereafter as council is able to consider such matter.
So that is the tracker rezone.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Yeah, I under... yeah. So... yeah. You'll get two more chances. So for the... folks came for the tracker rezone. The petitioner asked to have it postponed. I think they're re-looking at some of the things that they're doing, and probably from comments that you made in planning and zoning, and trying to look at that again. So we postponed that to January. So we're going to have it at the January, I think it's 9th, January 9th meeting. So we'll have the first reading of it there, and you can come back and speak on that topic at that point. All right. We'll move on to... Yeah, no, yeah, we're just going to postpone it till the next one. Yep.
So they're not going to take... speak during the visitor's section then on that?
No? Yeah, probably should have done it the other way.
Yeah.
All right. Move on to first reading ordinances.
First reading Council Bill, amended Council Bill Number 2022-114, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, rezoning the real property generally located at 300 Block of South Market Street from single-family residential R1 District to two-family attached residential R4 District.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mr. Godby is under the weather this evening, so I'm going to try to fill in for him. As Becca said, this is a rezone that you're seeing tonight, and it is had been... has been amended. The owner of the property in the 300 Block of South Market applied to rezone the site from R1 to single-family residential to R4 two-family attached residential. Back in November, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for an R3 multifamily rezone, which was the original request. Then during the November 14 meeting, after the first read, several residents expressed concern about a triplex adding to the existing stormwater issue. After the next day, staff reached out to the applicant and relayed those concerns to the applicant, and before the second reading, the applicant then submitted a new rezone request to R4 for duplexes. At the December 5 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission voted 7 to 1 to recommend approval to city council. During this meeting, two concerned neighbors spoke in opposition due to the existing stormwater issue. The surrounding land use is a mix of single-family residential, duplexes, and agricultural, and the proposed land use of the rezone is consistent with the land use in the area. I did want to add that the existing stormwater issue will require the city to work with the applicant to lessen the impact of the new development, and the applicant stated during the December 5 meeting that he has had an engineer on-site to find ways to work with the city to meet our code requirements. Do you have any questions about the amended rezone?
Any questions?
Do you happen to know why the one no vote happened?
It was due to the existing stormwater.
Stormwater, okay.
All right. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
And we will open up the public hearing if you'd like to speak to this item. Timmy, yeah, go ahead, Timmy.
Good evening. My name is Timmy Rika. I live at 403 East Lynn Street, and I was one of the people that was at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week. It was 7 to 1, and the one person that actually paid attention grasped the concept that dirt absorbs water, asphalt does not. There has been a house on that property since 1903. I bought my house in 2009. House was built in 1987 or '89 when no planning and zoning existed. I grasped that concept. So do the residents in the area. We have a stormwater problem. We know that. We deal with it. Building four houses on that property is going to flood my home. It's not a matter of if. It will flood my home. It will flood two other homes that are just east of my home. Will flood unless a house that is built that is no bigger than what was there since 1903. It's simple math. I'm not a geologist. I'm not an engineer, and I can't afford an engineer. I can't afford lawyers. But it's simple. When dirt is there, it absorbs water. I've shown pictures. I've sent them to Mr. Lucas and Mr. Peterson, and I'm going to write down your email addresses and send them to you. My question is, if it was your house that was sitting at 403 Lynn Street, would you vote to allow someone to build a property big enough to guarantee to flood your property? I don't think you will. Planning and zoning just basically told me I was an idiot and ignored me. They looked at the pictures, and none of them grasped the concept of how deep that water gets. I'm six foot tall. It goes over my knees. It will get into the cab of my truck. The cab of my truck is at my knee level. People don't grasp how much water that really is until you live there. And, you know, an engineer can say, "Oh, well, we can do this and do that." Well, nobody can out-engineer God. You can't do it. If you do, he will prove to you that you can't out-engineer him. Water has to have a place to go. Three inches of rain can flood my yard and road. More than that, it gets worse. My question is, if... my question is, is when it floods, will you guys be willing to let me take and bring a truck in and pump it into a truck and bring it to your house and fill your basement or your crawl space with water? I bet you won't. I bet the seven or nine, let's see, one, two, three, six or eight people, seven, eight people that were at that planning and zoning meeting don't want me to fill their crawl space with water when it rains. But yet they voted to let that happen at my place. I don't have a problem with someone building on his property, but somebody needs to stop it from ruining my property. And if you build a house bigger than what has been there since 1903, it will flood my property. Not if, not when, it will. There is just no way around it. And if you want to see the pictures, I'll lay them out. I'll let you have them. I'll email them to you, and I'll be here in January again. I just... I cannot afford to have my house flooded. You know, I don't have deep pockets. I'm not an engineer that can afford engineers and people to say, "Oh, it's not going to happen." Well, it's going to happen. I just need some help to stop it, and this is my only recourse to stop it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for serving, and thank you for helping the little guy that lives in Nixa.
Thanks, sir. And we'll leave open the public hearing?
Ron Sanders. Live at 976 Glen Oaks Drive. It rained really bad this weekend. Got, I don't know, a couple feet in the field behind me. I drove through town, saw several different housing areas that had standing water in their yards and stuff like that. Had a little bit of a thought this weekend about, um, some people are a little bit more equal than others, which is not something that I would ever want to see in our society. Some people are a little bit more equal than others, which is not something that I would ever want to see in our society. And I can honestly say that one person's freedoms are only good for them until they start encroaching on another person's freedoms. That should be one of the first things that the Planning and Zoning Commission or zoning board actually look at. And that's what this gentleman's talking about. You let someone come in and build on a piece of property next door, and then all of a sudden, this guy can't insure his house. He can't live in his house because every time we get a good thunderstorm over the weekend, he's got to deal with standing water coming into his house or threatening to come into his house. How fair is that to him, you know, the guy who's already been here? Property developer has more rights than the guy that has just a modest house. I don't know. I wasn't at the planning and zoning meeting, but it's what it looks like. So I don't know where this should go, but it should definitely... Y'all should definitely protect everybody's rights and make sure that one person's rights are not encroaching upon another person's rights. I do have a procedural question after that. If you guys wanted to right now, in the middle of all of this, y'all could table this, um... This ordinance, right? After we speak and everything? Y'all could take a vote to table it or to move it later?
Sure.
After the public comments and everything? Okay. Well...
She's just the first reading, though, so there's still another, there's another whole hearing.
Yeah, but I mean, you could table it, and then you could bring it back and give people a third reading, or you could give the Planning and Zoning Commission a little bit more time to, uh, to look into some of this stuff and give you guys a little bit more time to look into it. Are there storm drains along that road? I don't think that there are.
It's ditch. It's ditches.
It's just a ditch. So ditches aren't really all that efficient at carrying stormwater away like a, I don't know, 12 or 15-inch storm drain. I don't know where it would go, but until those areas are storm drained and we have a place to carry it away, you really can't do stuff like that. And I don't think we have the money to do it either, so...
Do not.
I think it falls right back to that very first thing, you know? One person's rights can't trump another person's rights. You know, you can't say this person is more equal than this person because he's a developer and he's going to bring three houses in at the expense of somebody else's misery in their own house, so... I hope y'all make a good decision here. It's, uh... It's important. And, you know, it sounds to me like there's several people that are going to be affected, and not in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. The Arizona ordinances do require that all water up to 100-year flood be handled, and so we can ask Scott about it. He's not here tonight, so we'll, at the next hearing, we'll have Scott here, and we'll be able to ask him more specific questions. But, so that's kind of, Mr. Sanders was saying that's the way that we protect the two parties. You both have property rights. You have your property rights. The owner of the land has their property rights, and the way we protect those is through our zoning ordinances that say they have to hold 100% of the 100-year stormwater on their property and release it over the same amount of time that it's currently released. Some people do a better job of that than others when they develop here, but that is the requirement, and that's, again, how we try to protect both parties in the discussion. We'll leave the public hearing open if anybody else would like to speak. And we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions?
Talking about that stormwater, and how would, how would someone go about doing that? Because I mean, when I talked to the gentleman, he said that the, the water runs, and there's a certain area that it goes to, but then that gets filled and then comes over and floods his property.
Yeah, I guess you could build like a retention, they may be required to build a retention wall or a retention basin, you know, kind of like if you go down towards the high school, when you, you know, there's a huge retention basin there because, so that all the water doesn't flood down into the next neighborhood.
Right.
And so it captures that water. That's part of that development. Something this small, I don't know what it would be. Yeah. Do you know, have any ideas, Doug? Okay, yeah. Again, we'd have to get plans, and so that's kind of the next step after this, is that they would have to provide plans to Scott.
And that's how we hold the builder, the developer accountable, is beef yourself with his plans.
Right.
Okay.
Like, the problem with this is no matter what decision is made, you infringe on somebody's rights. There is not a single, I mean, because what if he says, you know what, not going to do the duplex, but I want to build a 4,000-square-foot home with a pool? Well, I mean, we can't say, no, no, no. We got, you can only, we'll only approve this plan. So it's kind of a... I would love to see something come into fruition to fix the actual issue of the flooding. But then where does it all go? I know that that pond that's behind back there, I had, I used to live on that road back there, and I... My neighbor's across the street. I mean, it would creep up almost to their, their playset. We skipped rocks, had fun with it, but, but you put more water in there, and then that gets up to their back door. And so there's, there's not a, not a good solution.
Not a good solution.
Best of luck, everybody.
Any other questions or discussion?
We'll have plenty of questions for Scott.
Yes, we'll have questions for Scott when he comes back. All right, we'll move on to, we'll skip the next one and then move on to...
January 9th.
January 9th.
January 9th.
And move on to second readings.
Second reading Council Bill number 2022-117, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa adopting the 2023 operating capital budget for the city.
Good evening. You have the operating and capital budget before you for approval. We did change from the first reading, the transfer out of general into transportation. We took that out. The net effect is the same. The bottom line stays the same. It's just we took that transfer out, in and out. So other than that, you've seen the budget, and I'm happy to answer any final questions you have about it.
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. Did a great job. We will open up the public hearing if anyone would like to speak on this item. And we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? I'll accept a motion to approve.
So may.
Second.
Real call, please. Blink of your life.
Jared Giddens?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Jolene Graham?
Yes.
Matt Ogden?
Yes.
Seth Balog?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
All right, we have a 2023 budget. We'll move on to the resolutions.
Resolution number 2022-121, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa declaring the results of the November 8th, 2022 special municipal election. So per Charter, Section 9.3, the Council has to approve all election results once the election official, so the Christian County Clerk has approved the results. The Christian County Clerk has certified and approved the results. We are in receipt of those. They were attached in the Council packet for your review. Staff is recommending approval as it is required by the Charter.
Any questions? We will open up the public hearing if anyone would like to speak to this item. Close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
So may. Second.
All in favor? Seth said aye as well. Any noes? All right, move on to the next one.
Resolution number 2022-122, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with CBiz Benefits and Insurance Services Incorporated for consulting services related to the salary and compensation of city employees.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As my memo states, we would like your approval to go through with the contract for the salary and benefits survey that we would like to award to CBiz. It's been about five years since we have done a salary and benefits survey, and so we would like to go ahead and budget, the money was budgeted for this year, but we would like to go ahead and do that for 2023. Thoughts?
Any questions?
As my memo states, we did send it out to 62 vendors. We got three results, and other responses, so...
Do you want to explain why the... You did not pick the cheapest one?
It was PayPoint. And I believe...
For the greater good of the world. Let's, you or Jimmy can put some additional explanation on that.
Well, I mean, that was not the only thing. The three that came through, we had two that were definitely out of state. One in the north and one in the south, and then CBiz is actually out of, I believe, St. Louis, and so they are local. And when I called all of their references, because I called references for all of them, of course, we had our own reference for PayPoint from the previous time that we went with them. The ones for CBiz were by far much better, more positive than the others. Evergreen really didn't have any terrible reviews or references. They just, I think it was a perfect storm. They just had a lot of things going on. The ones I called had a lot of things going on that it didn't pass, or they just had not a great experience trying to get all their stuff passed through their council and things like that, but CBiz did not. Everyone that we called had glowing references and would definitely go with them again.
Did you have any local references for CBiz?
You know, it's been like six months since I called.
I'll just, I'll just chime in also that I did speak with some other city managers in other areas across Missouri, other cities across Missouri, and everyone I spoke to was very, very pleased with CBiz, and several of them actually used them multiple times or plan on using them multiple times. So they had, I personally had those conversations with city managers. They were very, very happy with the outcome. And as Amanda was talking about, unfortunately, you know, we weren't pleased with our last salary survey. Council wasn't pleased with the last salary survey. So based off our personal experience, I, we could not recommend moving forward with them again. And then, as Amanda stated, you know, the others had some concerns as well, but it was more about, too, for me, philosophy and the way that they did the salary surveys. I was very pleased with what I reviewed on CBiz's proposal, so...
CBiz also did, I think, two surveys for Loggers, which is our retirement plan, and they were very pleased with that outcome as well. So they are very versed in what our retirement plan would be going into this. They wouldn't really have to learn necessarily what would, that would entail. They already know it. So that was a big plus.
Any other questions? Thank you, Amanda. We will open up the public hearing if anyone would like to speak to this item. And close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Motion to approve?
So may.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill passes. Move on to the next one.
Resolution number 2022-123, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa adopting the 2023 through 2027 capital improvement program.
I don't know if you looked at the entire document. It's very long, but it is the 2023 through 2027 capital improvement plan. I will point out there is a mistake on the summary. In the 2024 electric budget, it says $25 million for AMI, and it should be $2,500,000 extra zero added there. But that's just in the summary. In the actual capital improvement sheet itself, the pricing is correct, so it was just in that summary page that was incorrect. The portion of the capital program relating to public improvements was heard by the Planning Commission at the November 7th meeting and was approved. So I will entertain whatever questions I might answer and then direct to other staff members any other questions that I don't know the answer to.
Any questions? I only looked at the first couple of years. All right, we will open up the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Seth's back on. Motion to approve?
So may. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, move on to the next one.
Resolution number 2022-124, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Decker and D. Goode P.C. for auditing services.
Okay, we have had the same auditor for over 30 years, so it was in best practice in our interest to go out for bid for this service. You can see, and I included the list, we did send it to 42 vendors, two of them directly, directly to auditing services, and Decker and D. Goode was the only response that we got. So we do have to have an audit. It's a state statute. And so we are recommending the passage of this with the intention of rebidding this service again next year and doing a better job of trying to solicit directly to vendors.
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. And we'll open up the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any other questions or discussion? Accept a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution number 2022-125, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to enter into a treasury management agreement with RVest Bank for lockbox services.
It's me again. Just by way of explanation, lockbox services is a service that we can use to scan the utility billing payment coupon and scan the check and then send that information, the coupon information will go directly to our utility billing system and post to customers' accounts, and then the scanned check information will go directly to the bank as a deposit. So that eliminates us having to physically take a stack of checks and deposit it to the bank. And so this will help process improvement, and it will also help human error, because, you know, we'll be scanning it, and it'll cut down on time that it takes to process checks. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this process.
So customers will take it to RVest Bank?
No. It's called lockbox services because one of the ways you can do it is you can actually have a post office box that's mailed, and then RVest processes all of it for you. But we're doing the onsite payment capture, so we will have the scanners in the utility billing office, and our staff will scan everything in. It's still called lockbox services, but it's not technically that. But that's, that's what it's called. So you can kind of, you can do it a full lockbox. You can do a hybrid, or you can do the fully onsite capture, and that's what we're going to do. We weren't comfortable just giving all our payments to somebody else to process.
Any other questions?
I have a question about that. Is there any professional services that are secured through this for support and uptime?
Yes. So what this is, is it's RVest's software, and it's also their website. So what we do is we log in to their website, so it's their responsibility to maintain all of that and provide that customer support and all of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jennifer. And we'll open up the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Motion to approve?
So may.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Getting there.
Resolution, resolution number 2022-126, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with TK Elevator Corporation for elevator services, maintenance, and inspection.
Good evening. As you may be aware, this city hall and the community center both have elevators. We've had a service contract with TKE for several years now. It just became time to renew that contract and review that contract. We did reach out to several vendors, and there's three other vendors that are even local to the Springfield area. However, all of those are manufacturers as well. And so once, knowing that we have TKE elevators, um, all of them suggested sticking with your uh, area representatives and your area manufacturers for that inspection and maintenance as they are the more highly trained professionals um, in their specific elevator brands. If we were in one of those areas that uh, maybe they, we didn't have a service provider or something like that, one of the other companies may consider um, uh, bidding on this. But at this point, they did not. So this is for all of our area, our annual inspections, uh, maintenance and upkeep of our elevators to ensure that they're in proper safety, working order uh, annually. I believe the contract is for $320 a month. That's up $20, I believe, over where we currently sit. Um, but uh, you know, knowing the times that they are, we thought that was pretty good. And so we're just asking uh, for your approval tonight uh, to keep us in that service contract with TKE. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope, no question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And we'll open up the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
Well, it's Seth's second. Sounds like a virtual second. That's fun. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Few more.
Resolution number 2022 dash 127, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa authorizing the destruction of certain records which have met retention. This is another annual resolution that we do every year. Um, per the local records board, uh, minimum standards retention periods that we have, we have records that have met retention and we no longer need to keep those on hand. The police department also has records, I believe they're reports. Chief Campbell could probably answer more questions about those. But all of them have met retention. They no longer need to be kept, so we will be destroying those if council approves.
Any questions? Thank you, Matt. And we'll open up the public hearing if you'd like to speak to this item. What's happening in discussion today, a lot of stuff with OpenAI, we're all like, oh, that's gonna, you know, it's gonna put teachers and everybody, you know, everybody out of business gonna put programmers like myself out of business. That's the same thing they said about 20 years ago with paper, is that with all the compute, when computers took over, we weren't gonna have any paper anymore. But we have a lot of extra rooms of paper now. That's not true. Just easier to print more paper. Uh, alright, we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And last one.
Resolution number 2022 dash 128, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Ozark's Clean Water Company for the city to provide certain services to said company.
Ozark Clean Water Company is a small sewer collection uh, company in the, and they have approximately 400 customers in, in this area where the RDE service territory is. Of course, when we purchased RDE, uh, that's now within that territory that we own. Ozark Clean Water uh, had an agreement with R E D E where they actually did, where R D E actually did their billing and collections for them, shut offs, those types of things. Um, and they came to us and asked for us to continue that contract. We didn't feel it was um, our best choice for numerous liability reasons to actually do their collections and their shut offs and those types of things. So we did work with them to um, provide some of the services that are in this contract, which would be, we will, we'll actually provide them the water readings and the information, the, the customer information in case there's a move in or a, or a switch in the account. So that way they can go ahead and do their own billing and their own collections. We would just gather the information monthly, send them the water readings. They'll be able to, from there, do their own uh, collections. This service, what uh, we had offered to do this for them to, and to cover our costs for a thousand dollars a month. Uh, they've agreed to that. And this, this uh, agreement actually has an initial three-year term, but it'll automatically roll over. If we get to that point, of course, there's also a 90-day out clause if for some reason they wish to do, do their own readings some other way or, or if uh, we would need to terminate for some reason, which we can't see today. But uh, anyway, that's uh, basically what this is for. Uh, we would, um, the, the resolution itself just authorizes Jimmy to sign the contract, so. Any questions?
At some point, will we be the ones that would do the sewer collection? As we upgrade their systems or anything like that?
You know, that, I, that's a good question. Um, they haven't offered to sell the sewer system. So, um, you know, we don't own, we don't actually own the collection system itself. They haven't offered to sell it and we haven't been out there looking to buy it, so.
Understandable. It's just a subdivision, like DNR, one of those SEEP things, right?
It's, it's very small. It's, it's right, it's the English Village and the surrounding area. They actually um, have a lift station that all this goes to and they actually pump it to Springfield for treatment. So it's, they don't even treat it themselves. It's pumped all the way up to Springfield. So at some point, yes, if that were to become ours, uh, there's a lift station there. Now that we own some other facilities in the area, that's a possibility that we could pursue at some point. But um, there wasn't, there's nothing has come up about it right now. They have a lot of other customers. There, most of their customers are down around the lake area, uh, which is where they're, where they're headquartered.
How did we come up with a thousand dollar a month reimbursement? What was the?
We, we made, we made an estimate, um, and I say we, Jennifer and her staff. They, they put together what they thought was gonna be the time to actually create the reporting every month and to put the, and to put it together and then that way we'd get our, our time, or our reimbursement back for our internal cost. Um, I guess so, it's an educated guess. So, and we'll evaluate that. I, I think, I think we're in good shape, um, according to my discussions, so.
$2.50 per customer, we could just write it down on a piece of paper, probably. Any other questions? Thank you, Doug. And we'll open up the public hearing. And close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Motion to approve.
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll move on to our discussion items. Mr. Watts.
Alright. Just a second, we'll get, we'll let Drew get the PowerPoint pulled up here and we'll get started. Alright, thank you, Drew. Mayor, council, as you know, the recent uh, tax initiative on the ballot failed. Uh, but tonight we still need to talk about where we go from here because our challenges have not changed. We still have the same challenges that we had um, before the, the tax initiative ever went to the ballot. So just as a quick reminder, I'm gonna run through just a, a few things that, um, as reminders so that we, we understand what we're still facing moving forward. Obviously, we still need the additional officers that we've always been talking about. We're still um, at least 11 officers down from where we need to be, uh, according to the last staffing study that was done uh, at the police department. We also still, um, we're not able to afford any additional officers in the 2023 budget because of budget limitations. So again, as, as we continue to grow, that demand is still there and actually continues to be a much stronger demand on the police services that we currently, uh, or the community is getting from the police department. We also still need the additional space. The police department is still, um, you know, we're outgrowing that department. We still have evidence storage issues that's, that's coming up, um, office space for the officers, all those kind of things that we've talked about is still there. Uh, we also still need the additional parks facilities. Uh, gym space is limited and it's been an issue for us and will continue to be until we find other solutions. Uh, we'll tell you that, you know, Matt has put, put a cap on all programs moving forward, just because we're out of space. Um, luckily, uh, this most current basketball season is well under that cap, uh, because we, Matt came up with the numbers on what we can handle um, with our current space. Um, but as, as Matt and I talked earlier today, this basketball session is actually a lower session than our normal one. So we're pretty good shape, but we are gonna be having to look at some um, possibilities of capping. Um, or at least unfortunately, if we don't find a solution. Um, and if we go above that cap into the end of next year is what we're really concerned about. Um, is having to be able to tell, hopefully we don't have to, but having to tell um, kids at some point, this is all we can handle. So again, that's still an issue for us. Um, and then of course, the other challenge that's still present is revenues versus expenditures. Um, what we are currently doing is not sustainable long-term. I've mentioned to council before that we are work, we're working on a seven-year projections. So I think that uh, Jennifer has made copies of that and provided for you guys, uh, cause I know it's gonna be hard to see on the screen probably, but. Um, and I'll let Jennifer quickly talk about those before we move forward. Sure, no, you can get from there. That's fine.
So you have two projections in front of you. One of them is without any additional police officers. And the second one is adding two police officers per year beginning in 2024. And if it's labeled at the top, which one is which?
And for the, and for the audience here and online, this, the one on the screen is currently without adding any additional officers. And then we'll move to the next, next one here in a minute.
So what you can look at there is um, the projected actual 2022 column is our best guess of how we're gonna end the year, um, revenue over expense. Then the next one is the 23 budget and then we've got a forecast from 2024 to 2030, seven years. And the numbers in red, that just means that the, the expense is greater than the revenue. And then if you will scroll down and look at the chart, if you wanna scroll down. That chart, what that means is, that's the ending cash balance each year. And the yellow line is our policy of um, reserves, which is 30% of expenditures budgeted. So you can see, in an ideal world, you would have a pretty, pretty good space of blue above the yellow line. And so if you look there, um, in 2024, we, we, we don't even make our policy of 30% of expenditures. And by 2025, we're in a negative cash balance position. I will point out as well that this ending cash balance does not include any kind of restrictions on reserves. That's just, that's all the money. So if you take into account that we have about $6 million set aside for different things, economic development savings account, park savings account, reserves accounts, then that, those numbers, you know, can mean, well, it's more dire than, than you're seeing right there. So you can see that the current trajectory is, is really not sustainable. Now, I will say, it's a little bit difficult to project out what sales tax is going to be in four or five years. If, you know, if we go through a recession, those numbers could be worse. If we go through a boom, th- those numbers could be better. So this is our best estimate based on about five years of previous activity. Were, were some of the assumptions that we used on both the expense and revenue side.
And then I'll also mention that capital was based on the five-year capital plan. So if we cut back any of that capital, obviously that could extend that out a little farther, so. But that's how we, we calculated capital.
I took the current five-year capital plan and, and used those numbers. And then beyond that, I just, you know, added about 5% of year over year.
And then the uh, next, next chart is if we were to try to add two additional officers a year, which is what we've tried to do in the past at a minimum. So that, that would be that next um, chart that you see.
Yeah. And all that does is just make us negative more quickly and, and to a degree, greater degree. So if you had any questions specifically, I'd be happy to try to answer.
If there's no questions on the projections, I'll move forward. Of course, we can always come back and, after this for discussion as well, if, if you want to, so. Uh, moving forward, just as a reminder, uh, we are still trying to follow our strategic plan. Um, and as a reminder, the High Performance Government Action Plan Number Three says identify and address staffing needs in order to meet community demands and provide admission services. Uh, Community Safety, Action Plan Number Two said provide voters an opportunity to fund law enforcement operations and facilities to meet the commu- community's growing needs and demands. And then Number Three is expand the police department facilities to address the growth of the department and the need for additional workspace. And then under funding unique places, Action Plan Number Eight is develop new recreational spaces and renovate existing recreational spaces in accordance with a parks master plan in order to meet the recreational demands of the community. And then Number Ten was put forward at least one ballot initiative which would provide voters an opportunity to fund expansion of the parks department, facilities and/or operations. Um, and then a, a last reminder on our sales tax. Again, we're at 7.475% total sales tax. We receive half, half a cent of that's transportation, one, one cent is for general and then 1.5% for use tax. Um, and also as a reminder, Nixa has not collected personal property tax since 1987. And we've only received about 5% of real uh, property tax as well. I know that question's came up quite a bit from the public. So we wanted to make sure that um, there, that everyone understands that. So, moving forward, what would an, another sales tax or additional sales tax generate? So if we wanna put this to numbers so that we know what we're talking about tonight, if we were to do a quarter cent uh, sales tax, uh, we're looking at about, again, the top line is general sales, second line is general use tax. Um, then the total is, is the bottom line, uh, 966,000. Now, I will remind you that we, council elected not to move the use tax portion, the half cent over to transportation at this time. But if something were to pass and you were to decide to do that in the future, that would change um, a little bit with the general use tax. And then the half cent would generate about 1.7 or a little over, um, and then the general use tax would be about 221,000. Uh, so a half cent would generate about $1,932,843. Now, I will mention that these numbers are based on end of year 2021. Uh, we have just got, as you saw in your packet tonight, we now have the end numbers for 2022, so I'm gonna be going back and updating those. Um, but you know, so for 22, for example, we, we did see about a 5.6% increase in our general uh, general tax. And then we saw about a 28% increase on the, on the use tax uh, for all of 22. So there was some increases there that I'll be updating these numbers on, uh, once I get those plugged in. And then a three-quarter cent would generate about uh, 2,567,000 on general sales and 331 in general use for a total of about $2,899,264. And then a one cent, again, generates about 3.4 million, um, and a 442,000 in general use tax for a total of $3,865,686. And of course, those are per year. So if you wanna see them all together, that's, that's the total amounts that a quarter cent, half cent, three-quarter cent, one cent could potentially generate based off of, again, our end of year 2021 numbers. So if you wanna look at, again, our current needs, and I know we've talked about these before, but just for discussion, additional 11 officers is a, gonna be a little around, around 1.1 million dollars. Um, and a three-story police department building, if we go with the original plan, is about 13 million. Uh, two-story building, if we were to scale that back, again, that, the three-story as a reminder was a 20-year plan to make sure that we're not just planning for today, but we're planning for future growth for the next 20 years. Um, it was at 13 million. A two-story is what we need today. Uh, and it will cover us for a little while, but it, within 10 years, we're gonna be coming back looking for another, another option or another solution. Uh, but about a two-story is about 11.3 million. Um, and then part, well, let me back up just a second. Police department uh, costs, just, just so you kinda get an idea of what we're dealing with. If we did a three-story building, um, again, these, before, when I tell you these numbers, these are just estimated yearly payments if we were to bond them out. But again, a caution because interest rates change, there's a lot of variables there. So please understand when I throw this number out, it's not a set number. It depends on where the interest rates are and where the bonding and all that happens at the time. And we know that's pretty volatile and tends to change. But last time we checked, uh, before we did, uh, we were, if you did a three-story building, your payments are gonna be close to a million dollars a year. Um, around 160,000 to a, to a million dollars a year is what your payments would be on a three-story. A two-story is gonna be about 820,000 a year. Um, so really, you're only talking about $200,000 a year difference if you're gonna, if you go build a two-story or a three-story. So that's something to consider when we're looking at as well. For $200,000, obviously, a year, to me, 20 years worth of growth and coverage is, it would be smart. Um, and then, uh, so then moving forward to the parks. Uh, if we were to additional court, now this is if we were to build an additional basketball court on our current center, on our, on the X. additional basketball court on our current center, on our, on the X center. If we were to build that, it would run about 8.8 to 10 million dollars to build that additional court onto our current facility. And then if we were to build a separate facility, and this is a separate standalone facility with just basketball courts, you know, we presented a turf option and, and fitness center and all that. We've, if you take all of that out and just look at basketball courts, you're looking at about 10 to 14 million dollars, is about what that would, would run. And then I know there's other park CIPs that we've talked about, and we're, obviously, again, tonight, we can discuss those some more if you would like. But the indoor pool has come up a lot from our public. They've, they've wanted to, for us to put an indoor pool on the ballot, or consider trying to build an indoor pool. Those are very expensive, you know, and we're looking at 18 to 20 million dollars to build an indoor pool, and that's not a real fancy pool. That's, that's, that's not a, a very large one. It's a, what, it was a 20, about 30,000 square feet, would run about 18 to 20 million dollars. And then, of course, we still have to fund the maintenance of it, and chemicals, and employees, and all those kind of things. So it is an expensive venture, but again, it's something that our public has been asking for. And then the O family Century Park is another CIP possibility for the future. And north section only is about 5.3 million. Now, when I say that number, that's based off of our old, our ridge, our parks master plan. We're currently doing a new master plan for the O century park, which will be done, we think, by the end of the year.
Yeah, by the end of the year, they'll be here for a presentation in January.
So we hope to have a better idea after that about where we sit. But these numbers are just based off of what we currently have with the parks master plan. And that's doing the north section only, the passive section. That does not include the south section or doing any kind of ball fields or anything like that. So, recommendations, my recommendation would be to consider a three-quarter cent general sales tax that we would dedicate to law enforcement. And, and I'll explain why that, I think that would be the direction to go. As mentioned earlier, you know, a payment on a new police department is going to be around a million dollars a year, and it's about 1.1 million dollars to hire 11 additional officers. So you're well over $2 million. And if you go back here and look at a half cent, it only brings in about 1.9. And that's where we've been, you know, when we had the original discussion on the, on the last sales tax initiative, the plan was to build the, if you remember, to build the sports center, and that would be self-sufficient and pay for its, it's, or pay for the payments on that, and then we could actually use more than half a cent to fund the police department. A half a cent alone, just for the police department, isn't enough to fund, it'd be very close to be able to get a building and 11 officers at 1.9 million. And that does not, if we were to do that, that does not help our issue with the seven, as we saw the seven-year plan earlier, because that's still pulling the same amount of money from our general fund going to the police department. So in the end, it doesn't, it might get some officers on the road and get, and might get the building, depending on where the costs come in. But again, we're still in the same boat, because we're not bringing any, any additional to the general fund. So the three-quarter cent would be able to afford the 11 officers, and also be able to build the facility and be able to lessen the amount of draw that we're taking from the general fund to the police department currently, which could, again, help us in the, in the long run, especially with our revenues versus expenditures. So that's why I would recommend looking at a three-quarter cent to be able to fund the needs that we currently have. And then move back, whoa, went too far, sorry. Move back there, went too quick. And then, of course, our future parks, we could consider a future parks tax as well. If we were to do a quarter cent general for maintenance and operations, if you remember, on a general fund, the general tax were maxed at, at 2%. So we only got one cent to work with, or 1% to work with. So if we did a three-quarter for law enforcement, that'd only leave a quarter that we could do for parks. Now, there is the option in the future of considering a parks or stormwater tax that could go above that. You, it's actually not considered part of the general fund tax, or, or general sales tax. It's actually standalone parks and stormwater tax. You can actually go up to half a cent on that if we wanted to look at doing something like that in the future, where we could address some of the parks operations and some of their needs and maintenance, and also maybe address some of our stormwater needs across the community as well. And then I'll just caution, we still need to do a little more research. We haven't had much time to get all the statutes researched to make sure the statutes line up with that, but we're, we'll, we're working on, we'll be working on that moving forward, depending on the council's direction tonight. But I will, at the very end, I want to say this also, that we need a parks tax to pass before we're able to provide any of those CIP options. And because if we can, we're struggling, Matt's struggling right now to keep up with his maintenance and keep up with operations with the personnel. As you know, he requested additional personnel in 2023 budget. We couldn't afford it. So we weren't able to add any personnel to the parks to help with operations. So that need is still there. And if you were to come back and look at building any of these facilities, if you were to build an additional court, we don't have the people to run it. If you, if you build an indoor pool, we don't have the people to run it. So the same thing with the Century Park, we don't have the people to take care of it. And if, and if you were to look at doing a, for instance, one of the things that we talked about is, maybe if you do a parks tax and a CIP tax on the same ballot, really, it's not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. And the reason being is because if, let's say, the parks tax fails, the operations and maintenance fails, but the CIP for an indoor pool passes, now you've got to build a pool, and it's empty. You have nobody to run it, you can't afford to run it, you can't handle the maintenance costs, the chemicals, the personnel, all of that. So you can't really put them both on the ballot, because that's what you risk, is one passing and not the other. And then you can't, and you're, you've got an empty facility. That's, that's just wasted space. So I know it's a lot of information. I just wanted to give you all the information to talk about, for discussion. So again, we're open for any discussion. And I will tell you, staff is looking for some feedback from council tonight, because if we were to move forward on an April ballot initiative, we have to get this to council in January, into two meetings. And potentially, we might have to do a special meeting for the second meeting, because that second council meeting in January is the day before the deadline. So we're a little nervous about making that deadline. So we would probably have to come back and ask council to consider a special meeting for that, for a second reading, if we were to go, if council were to decide to go for, for an April ballot initiative. So, again, just to generate conversation, so.
I had a couple of questions.
Yep.
One, this goes back to when you were talking about the basketball program. Is this basketball season normally less than the others, or is this just something that's kind of all of a sudden we're having less enrollment?
Yes, sir. Typically, this is a lower season. We're actually up 11 kids over last year. And so our January, February season sees a lower number than our November and December season. It's traditionally been that way since we started offering two seasons.
Okay. That's good. So I was concerned that it might be, just because people are tired of dealing with the overcrowdedness.
No, no. I don't think it's anything to do with that yet.
And then my next question goes to when you were talking about doing a three-quarter cent where it affords the 1.1 million for the officers, and then also the million-dollar payment on a three-story building comes out to, you know, 2.1 million dollars. What happens when we need 25 more officers? Where are we going to get the funding for that?
Yep. And that, and that's another reason.
To levy on that, my concern is if we only ask for a three, three-quarter percent, then we're going to have to figure out how we're going to be able to get more in the future. So why not go for the full cent?
Sure. And, and that is an option. We can potentially go for a full cent, dedicate to law enforcement, if that's the direction council wants to go. The idea is that, that three-quarter cent gives us a pretty good buffer for future growth. And obviously, as the hope is that we continue to grow commercial, the commercial growth continues and sales tax continues to increase. So the three-quarter does give us a little bit of buffer to be able to add some additional officers in the future. The other thing is, we can't hire 11 officers day one. There's no way chief could handle training 11 officers in one year, let alone get that many people hired, let alone training. So that will also allow us to be able to take some of that money and, and save that and do some other things, whether we can, we can continue to get our reserves back up, or we can look at doing some other, because it, that will offset the general fund a little bit. So there's some things we can do there, too. But yes, one cent would be, obviously, give us enough money to handle a lot of future growth. But again, you know, what we presented to the public last time was, you know, a little, it's going to take a little over half cent to, to meet our needs, so.
Right.
Yep.
And just to clarify, this is a sales tax that goes into general fund. It is not a public safety.
It's not technically what's called a public safety tax. That's additional, that allows you to go above the 2%, has to be done through state, and has to go through, get some state authorization to put it on the ballot. This is a general sales tax, but it is dedicated or earmarked for law enforcement. So it keeps us under that 2%.
Okay. I've had an awful lot of people tell me that they would have voted for that parks tax if it was going to be for an indoor pool. I know that, and I keep telling them how expensive they are, and how expensive they are to run. But what would, what could we do to make that a reality, to be able to build the pool and maintain it?
So what I, what, what I would suggest is we look at going to the public with a parks tax of some type, whether it be a quarter cent for the general, or we do a parks slash stormwater, to be able to get the money we need to handle the operations and personnel and maintenance. That way, we know we have that availability. Then go back to the public after that with a CIP tax. We could even look at doing a sunsetting CIP for a pool, whether we do a 10-year, 20-year, whatever we decide to do. But we go with the public with a, with a CIP tax that sunsets, and give them the opportunity, now that we have the maintenance and operations, that we can, we can handle that. Now, if you want to, here's what it'll cost for an indoor pool, and it'll be a sunsetting CIP tax, and give them that option.
And if you look at it, kind of like Ozark, they got a tax to build their community center, but then they didn't have enough money for operations. They had to go back and ask for a second, secondary tax to pay for the operations, because they didn't understand what the cost of an indoor pool is. It's a loser. Everybody tells us that.
Oh, yeah, it is. It's a, it's a money pit.
It's a money pit, so.
But that's what, and it's been on our plan for years, and, and I'm, I was shocked how many people came up and said that to me, though, because I'm kept telling them how expensive these things are, and we have to have a tax to be able to pay for maintenance and stuff. They said, we don't care, we would have voted for it.
Same thing with the skate park.
Yeah. It's, it's kind of that thing, putting the chicken before the egg. We can't really build it until we can afford to run it. And so I think that would, you know, if we decide to do that, that's what we would explain to the public, is that we have to be able to maintain it and operate it. So we need, we need the funds to do that. And if we get that, we'll bring a CIP tax, or CIP back for consideration to build it.
So we could propose the quarter cent parks tax, this time, and saying that, that, that the, a CIP tax to build the pool is conditional upon that, that we have to have that for the operations. So that would, instead, I think Jimmy's proposing a three-cycle
Yeah, yeah.
idea where we do a police tax this time, parks tax in a future election, and then a CIP tax for construction of items, and a third tax. So you could condense that to two
Yeah.
election cycles by doing parks.
I know we need the gym, but this is one thing people have brought up over and over and over.
So explain how we can combine the parks and the stormwater to go above the 2%? I don't understand.
Well, that, that's, well, I know we can do it, but we haven't got the statutes together yet. So that's something.
That is what Ozark has. So Ozark has a parks/stormwater tax, and so like, a tenth of it goes to stormwater, and nine-tenths goes to the parks, or something along those lines.
The way municipal taxes work in Missouri is the state legislature has to adopt an enabling act. And so there's an enabling act for a general fund sales tax, and it's capped at 2%. And so you have one cent authorization for general fund. Well, since it's general, for general municipal purposes, the council and the public can dictate where that goes within that, because it's the broadest scope. So if, so for the, the quarter cent proposal for, you know, a parks tax would be utilizing a quarter cent of that 2% allotment that were allowed under statute. Then there are these special revenue statutes that exist where you can go above your 2%, but they usually have a particular, they have a different required ballot, and they have different authorization thresholds potentially. And so some cities have additional authorization to levy additional taxes, like the law enforcement sales tax that the city administrator mentioned. Some cities have a special statute from the General Assembly authorizing them to levy those taxes. And that's, that's additional to whatever your 2% threshold is under the general fund, or the general municipal funding statute. Does that make sense?
That, that's what our transportation sales tax is. It's in addition to the general sales tax. That's why it's in its own fund. It has to be a special revenue fund, only spent for those purposes. And the reason why parks, I don't know why parks and stormwater is together. That's just the way the General Assembly did it. They don't really go together, but it is a parks and stormwater sales tax. And there is no requirement that you split it half and half, you know, half to stormwater, half to parks. It's kind of up to the governing body to decide how that money should be spent.
So we heard a lot of the argument about, you know, if it was, we can try to do the police and parks together. A lot of people said, I'd support the police, but not the parks. Are we going to get people to say, I'd support stormwater, but not parks? I mean, it seems like the city has a lot of things against the parks.
Now, but I will say, though, that what I like about potentially looking at a stormwater and parks is it does leave us a quarter cent in general for the future councils, if there's something that comes up that we need to consider, to, that we need to, up for operations or anything else in the future. If we, if we do that quarter cent parks, and then the three-quarter cent police, that does eat up all that 2%. So anything in the future would have to be one of those dedicated funding sources, but.
And we did propose, council, well, not any of us, it was long before any of us were here, but council did, did propose a parks and stormwater tax, say, the early aughts or mid aughts sometime, so maybe 15 years ago, 20 years ago, that was defeated.
And, and just for conversation, that type of tax can be done in increments. You can do an eighth, a quarter, three eights, or a half cent, but you can't go above half.
Back to your point on the, kind of the future, I think we had been doing pretty well on keeping up our, our police expansion, keeping up with our sales tax expansion. But, you know, over the last five years, we've had to increase the starting pay for police officers just because of the climate and the, what it takes to recruit a new police officer nowadays. And so, you know, I think we just kind of outstripped what our growth was. So we were on a pretty even plane on both of those, and then, well, these numbers are flat.
We had to make retention possible.
Yes, yeah, there's, yeah, there's no decision, yeah, there's no real choice in the matter. It's just, that's kind of the reason that we haven't. But hopefully, in the future, we would see the growth would catch back up again to the increase in the police department.
That's right. Correct. Yeah. And again, if any other staff, Matt or chief, if you have anything that you'd like to talk about to your departments, feel free to chime in.
Any other questions or discussion? So.
Again, we'll just need some direction tonight, because if we do want to move forward with an April ballot initiative, we're going to have to get to work pretty quick.
So you could do a half police, or you could do three-quarter police, you could do a quarter parks, you could propose all three, and then you could vote on them when you, when we come back in January. So the half wouldn't be quite enough, so we, you know, we'd have to say we're going to add eight officers and a new police station or something. So it wouldn't, wouldn't give us any extra room, and it would, wouldn't meet quite the requirements that we currently have. Three-quarters would be a little bit more than what we need for the exact requirements we have, but would give us room for the future. And then the quarter cent parks tax, we could propose that now, or we could propose it later. But that'd be a prerequisite for the pool.
Looking at these options, I think I would be in favor of us looking at the three-quarter for the police, and then doing the half cent for the stormwater and parks.
At a later date, or same ballot?
TBDT.
On the separate ballot?
Yeah, because I could vote one of them down.
Possible. I think that's, I think that was what staff's recommendation was, was just, and I think Matt had said that, yeah, he thought it was better to hold off to the next election to do the parks, so you could focus just on that.
But we definitely would like to take both eventually, because that's what the public told us in our feedback from the last ballot initiatives, they want them separate and, and that option. So we want to give them that. We, but I think that splitting them out would, would be a little better, because one, it would help us educate the public better as well on one tax initiative at a time. And, but that would be.
And I think that's something we got to really do, is really spend more time educating.
Do you happen to have this spreadsheet changed with what would happen if one of those was voted in?
I have a version that has a full one cent, because I had done that prior to the ballot initiative, just to make sure that it was enough for what we were proposing to do. So I'd have to tweak it a little bit, but I could definitely bring that back.
That would be.
I'll just email it to us. Send that to us in the meantime, when you get it up to date.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, half or three-quarters for police? Or does anyone need more time to think about it, when you want both to come back?
Jimmy, the only other question I would have is, is would doing like a two-thirds make any sense at all, leaving that extra a little bit more for in the future?
Can't do, can't do that.
Can't do.
Has to be in quarter increments for the general sales tax.
Okay. Well, I mean, I saw that our tax rate is at like 4.785 or something, so.
Yeah, it's a weird, there's like some .25 ones from the, like.
The state is .225.
911, library, there's several others.
And I think we really need to kind of show how that 7.4785 is really broken down more so, as part, you know, because. five is really broken down more so as part, you know, because, I mean, a lot of people think that that whole seven and a half cents is coming to the city, and it's not.
Yep. We, we, yeah. And the property taxes. We tried to publicize that, and we'll, we'll continue to try to do that even more.
Yeah, we'll have to definitely push that more.
Yep.
So three-quarter, half.
Three-quarter.
Three-quarter.
Yep. If we, if we were to go, if, if we were to go to a half, we would definitely have to look at cutting back the building and, and/or not as many officers. I mean, we got to make sure that we're under that. It would be, it'd be tight. And I'm concerned about construction costs and all those kind of things.
Start over in seven to ten years.
Do what?
I said, and then you start over in seven to ten years with the exact same issue.
Same position we're in today.
Yeah.
I think one of the things we failed to do a little bit, too, is when we put it out there for the police department especially, it was like, we're going to build this big building, like, we're going to have to have it like right now. We're going to be, all these things like right now, instead of saying, this is a twenty-year plan that we're looking at, and we're going to do it a little bit at a time, because they all look at it as one big lump thing, rather than something that's going to grow with us. So we need to plan a little bit more in letting them understand that, how that's going to work.
I would also point out that, you know, we're talking about general fund funding. There are other staffing needs within the general fund, in the communications department, in the parks department. There are other funding needs in the general fund to think about. So having a little bit more cushion is more advisable, in my opinion.
Yeah. And Jennifer makes a fantastic point. We've been talking about parks and police, but she's right. There are a lot of other needs across the city that we've not been able to meet, because it comes out of general fund.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I think it'd be a poor decision to do a two-story building. When a three-story building costs very little in the big scheme of things, and it lasts us twenty years. So if we're going to do it, we need to do it right, or we're doing the city a disservice.
Yep, I agree.
We definitely need to do the three-quarter, or we're hurting ourselves.
Okay. I think everybody agrees on that. And then the parks, does anyone want to bring the, a quarter cent parks or the half cent this election, or is everyone okay with leaving that for the next election? Has Jimmy?
I want to leave it for the next election.
Okay. All right. So we go with staff's recommendation.
Okay.
A three-quarter cent police-specific general use tax.
Okay, we'll work it up.
Seth, did you have anything to comment? Sorry. Forgot about Seth.
I agree. So I agree with the discussion, two, four, three-quarter.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. So Jennifer will update this with what that looks like and send that out to us. And anything else from staff? Okay. Anything else? No. Had a great time at the tree lighting and the Christmas parade. Matt did a great job on all of those. It turned out wonderful.
Matt did not do those. Matt did those. They did a great job.
Anything else from council?
Well, I guess to the four people that stayed, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right, we'll reconvene next year. A motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
I have the extra treats up here if anybody wants them.